Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Now I just.
I just learned that.
Okay.
I just learned.
Yeah.
So. So. Okay. Yeah, do you know? Lawrence. From this.
Yeah, I can tell the bit.
Scott over at Monday's. We should run the mistake.
Anybody?
Well, that. No, it sounds to last a while.
That wasn't very good. Not too good. I want it to be stopped.
But I sent my mother.
Did you send your mother? No, it's it's muted.
She had an eye appointment yesterday.
Hey, Mama.
Yeah. I'm gonna go. Oh, did I tell you I must have seen any brush of him? Stay here, stay here. Oh, you must have given. Well, whatever you do, we're muted.
We are. As your camera's off.
All three P F. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for our nation under God indivisible, with all due due and justice for all.
So happy to have you guys back today and I'd like to move agenda item number second A to the very beginning of our agenda. So could I have a motion to move item funding?
I'll make a motion to move item seven A. All business interviews superintendent and school finalists. To. Now. I bet. All my favorites.
It's a lot of books. I was so kindly tested the. No, no, so. Thank you very much for coming. Great. And I know that you had changed your schedule around a little comedy, that's not as great. Okay, so without further ado. Michelle has question number one.
Okay. This is a multi-part question, so bear with me. I will ask you them in three parts. In your first interview with us, you learned you leaned in on high quality and experienced teachers being a strong lever for knowing and superintendent chair. Whether curriculum and instruction were effective in the classroom. We agree and there is a lot of investment that a school makes in curriculum and instruction to ensure that it is moving the outcomes. Could you dive a little deeper into this question? As superintendent, how do you think about researching and evaluating the instructional program?
Okay. First of all, I still believe in veteran quality teachers. I believe they're the heart of the school. I believe they have tremendous knowledge, but that's not the only part. I sort of written up some notes that. Point answer is probably why you go to the new D E standards for teacher evaluation that ties how effective cricketing is measured by Kevin's visits into their classrooms. But that's a. Can the answer? So what I believe. And what I try to do, and again, I want to emphasize. In a small school like this, that a partnership has to exist between Kevin and I. So if I go into classes. I can't have him thinking, oh, Rob's doing this or Rob's doing that. I would go in not for the same purposes that Kevin. Would go into a classroom. So I would go into classes a lot. I would be looking to make sure that the curriculum is actually being taught. And being able to see the gaps that are there because as a former teacher. We all would have our sort of specialties and our emphasis and what we would spend a lot of time on. And then parts that maybe wouldn't get covered as deep. So I want to see that in terms of effective curriculum is taught with fidelity, it's taught even, it's taught with equity. I would be looking for things that aren't easy to measure, wouldn't be looking just for facts and scope and sequence and grades. I'd be looking to see that instruction reached all learners. That it was rigorous. Because I think it's important to challenge kids to go further than what they think they can go in a sport, in a subject. In life itself, that. Kids have the ability to do much more than what we think they can do. So I think it's the job of an educator not to be afraid of that, but to be challenged by that. And then have kids come out from that. So I can't believe I did that. I can't believe I accomplished that task. So even though it might look risky upfront, I think it's really, really important to do that. I think it's important to witness student engagement and investment in a culture of belonging and trust. Which you have a unique place or a small school. And it could flip to a really negative atmosphere real fast. Because you don't have a situation where it could just blend in everywhere. But you've got the ability to know your kids all the way up through and know their learning styles, to know what. Their dreams are, what their excitements are, what their passions are. And you have class sizes that are small enough to do that. So I look for that. I look for. The cultivating of critical thinkers. I look for real life problem solving. I look for cultivating and understanding of others and then appreciation for others. Which is difficult in a school that does not have tremendous diversity. I looked at the D E website and you're eighty-five or eighty-seven percent white. And then ten percent Hispanic or whatever. But kids are going to go out into a world and it's not going to change much when they go to Swansky, right? It's a little more diverse, but not dramatically. I think it goes to seventy-seven percent are white. But they're going to enter a world where there's multiple. Situations of kids from all kinds of different backgrounds and cultures and they'll have spent thirteen years maybe not. Being interfaced with that. So I think it's important that that we do that. I think it's important to see a cultivating of service above self. That there's a contribution back in a curriculum to those that sacrificed and gave you the opportunity to have an education in a school like this. The kids should thank those folks in some way. You know, people go out a lot of things. To allow kids to have the best education they can get. So I think it's important that kids send thank you notes, that kids do do cleanups on beaches and roadsides and that they they give back to those that gave that to them. And I think it's. Going to be passed on. They're going to have their kids do it someday. And I just think that's really important. I think it's also important to allow for progress in the curriculum, if possible, at one's own level and at their own pace. Because if the curriculum just shoots forward. And if you don't get it, well, that's your problem. Is not a good situation. So through. Tier one and tier two and tier three instruction to be able to get kids to have tutors and mentors to catch them up. So that they're not left behind is extremely important. That there's an understanding and you do this really well and appreciate the natural world around you. I mean, amazing partnership in Northeastern that you have. Just everything I've read about on your website. I think ultimately I look from the curriculum that it's teaching. To produce. Coming out the other end of the school and the other end of Swansky. Good people, good citizens. Good voters. Good parents. Good husbands, good wives. And that can be in the curriculum. It doesn't have to be about just how you do an algebra equation. And the whole package can be about, you know, coming out as a as a very solid, well-educated person. And that's more than just the curriculum. So that's the first part.
Thank you. Do you have an experience or example? When you were in the school's leadership? Where you decided to pivot with instruction? And if so, how did you come to that position?
Well, the most obvious one was we all had to pivot when we hit the pandemic. You know, it was whatever, it was almost the anniversary of it right now, right?
Yes.
March, whatever, March twentieth or something like that, just boom. Governor Baker calls and says school's going to be shut down for two or three weeks or whatever. And then going to shut down the rest of the year. We don't know if you're going to reopen. Everybody went through that. Everybody in this country. And. We had to teach. Kids were home. We had to get computers. We had to, you know, decide how we were going to reach them. And I think it's it really, really well with that, at least in Rockport. They were very resilient. I can remember kindergarten classes, every single kid there. Teachers still having them do exercises, jumping jacks. And I mean, it wasn't perfect. But that was certainly a pivot. Instantaneously, we had to come back and reach kids through this object right here. That is about as impersonal as you can get. But. We made it through that. And that certainly was a forced pivot. The best example I think I have of a planned pivot was changing our math program in Rockport from something called Investigations. Which was a pretty popular program back then to something called Envisions. And we did that because our elementary math scores, raw scores were low. And specifically what I focus on, the student growth profile. Were low scores. They were below fifty. They were high thirties. Kids were coming in in front of an instructor and coming out the other end, not really being moved forward. And they weren't over the fifty percent per. Of percent of you guys have sixties in a lot of cases, as I saw. So you've got an amazing situation there, but we weren't having that with Investigations. So we had a faculty committee. We looked at all kinds of different programs. We hired a consultant who used to work for the Department of Education. Nassim Jafar, she took us right through all the kind of different programs aligning with the mass standards. And we ended up with Envisions. Which actually was good for a number of years. And then it was a little too complicated for some teachers to be able to really put forth in the lower grades. And they have now shifted again. To an eye-ready math program. Which has a. Real focused piece for parents to work with kids at home and Envisions didn't have that. But we. I think did it did it right, looked at it and for the first year, the score sort of had a depression, but then they went way back up the third year. That first year you change a program is fairly risky. Because you're not going to necessarily get the instant results when you're training and doing professional development with the teachers, but if you stay with it, it'll come through. So I think that's my best example of the time we pivoted. There are some others. We did co-teaching, which was a pivot. You know, from taking our special ed kids and them having to go to a resource room, being right in the classroom with all their peers and the special ed teacher coming into the classroom. And co-teaching that class. That was the absolute right thing to do. And that was a pivot. Play.
Great. Thank you so much for those examples and also for your evaluation of a of a new program and the challenges of everybody learning that and coming to take a dive and then coming back.
It's given us a bad rap. The score is not very good. Parents are going, what's going on?
Yeah.
And was it the teachers? Was it their children? Was it the culture of the school? And it wasn't. It was the program. It just does not. Right for kids at the time. There may have been a time when Investigation was okay. I mean, they run through that with everyday math.
Lastly, can you expand upon how you cultivate a working relationship with the Swansky schools that help bridge the gap between our curriculum?
Yep, it's on that action. I think the very first thing you do is. And I I think I'm fortunate because I know Pam Angelakis really well from my time in Rockport, is to reach out to her, to have meetings with her, meet with her curriculum folks and her assistant principals. Have our teachers and educational staff reviewed both curriculums? That are taught. I'm not sure how different they are or how similar they are. I would assume there's differences. In the pacing and the actual delivery of it. Find out where the similarities are and where the gaps are. And then since that is your. Middle school and high school. Make sure that that gets solidified and brought, you know, back online a little bit. I think the fifth and sixth grade teachers, we should somehow free them up so they get some time to observe classes in Swansky. And I think it would be good for Swansky teachers to come and observe the classes here. To see what. Nahum kids experience, what they're up against. And I think they would do that. I mean, it's professional development. See something going on in another school. They get a sub that day or it's a half-day workshop or whatever. They come to watch the good things that are happening here. And then your fifth and sixth grade teachers do the same thing. You know, they go in that direction. I think there's fertile ground for sharing professional development together. I don't know if you do that now or not, but I think there are certain initiatives that you could not only save money, but you could bring in. More effective folks and. Share that in your professional development tone. And then I think there's possibilities when you do make curriculum changes to. Buy en masse so that the prices go down so you can get more for your value because it's not just Johnson School ordering curriculum for a hundred kids. It's Swansky and the Johnson School ordering curriculum forever. And those places will give you a discount on that. And money's important. You know, money's hard to come by in schools. So I I think the. Partnerships are easy to be there. You just have to go after go after those people.
Thank you.
Mom. Thank you. Thanks for all that thought of this. That was great. Okay. I'm going to do a prayer. I'm going to ask a couple of questions about culture. So. At Johnson, we need to elaborate the work around building an inclusive environment and making a strong statement against bullying of any kind. Inside of that, we specifically need constructing an inclusive and anti-racist environment as a priority in our school plan. We understand. That students and families. That are historically marginalized due to race, sexual or gender identity, family unit construction or other identity markers need a caring and focused eye and a knowledgeable one. Of the schools or senior who are in order for those families to feel safe enough to be able to be there and bring their wholesome to the environment. That's because bias doesn't exist everywhere. And and this has helped, this conversation that's happened over time has helped our whole community learn to get together well. And that includes. Students with privilege because it's an opportunity for them also to learn outside of their box in a lot of the ways that you just mentioned. So we want to hear about how, if you were selected for this role, how you would carry on this work at the Johnson's that Tony has partnered along with Kevin, you know, with our support at school meeting. How will you ensure that this anti-bias eye realization and education continues? And then classrooms are going to, in the in the school environment itself. Is going to see the lived experience of historically marginalized groups like O G B T kids, kids of color, kids that come from different families that are different from like the mother and daughter type families. And then all children get to bring their whole selves to this one caring natural school. And then I'm going to ask another question that goes deeper. I'll use that.
I mean, the first thing I think is that. You are the primary job is to set the tone right from the top. I think that's what a good superintendent does. I think you. Are. Visible, present on a daily basis, which is hard to do on a two-day-a-week job, but I'm. I'm telling you, I would not just be here two days. I'd probably be here four days a week. And not be saying, hey, where's the compensation for that? I think you just have to be here. And that would just go with the territory. I think you review your curriculum for bias. You make changes where it needs to be done. I would assume that that process has been underway, but I don't know that. Sometimes it's hard to pick up on the bias in the curriculum. And I think it's really important that happens. I think you seek out and implement curriculums that celebrate cultures and diversity, but you actually target that. I think you review and update your policies. Now, Tony's policies are.
He really.
Watched seven or eight of your meetings on tonight. It's okay, here's fifteen more. First readings and second readings and. I. Have paid quite enough attention to see the ones on, you know, dealing with diversity and equity and those sorts of things. But if they're outdated, it's really important to make sure those are brought up to speed and are kept up to speed. I envision, and I've done this before, of having a mutually developed sort of code of who we are at Johnson, what we believe in, and then that's posted in classrooms and it's somehow done in a mural on a wall or whatever that kids. We had one at Mount Arizona High School that was a huge sort of the kind of thing, cheerleaders would make a banner out, put it up on the wall and it's what we believed in. And we'd ask the kids in an assembly. You don't have to, but if you agree with this, we'd like you to come up and put your name on it, sign it. I was like, geez, there were six hundred kids that went to school. We must have had five hundred kids who wrote their name on there. And they didn't put graffiti on it. They didn't write a swear word there. They were about. Taking care of themselves and their their friends and treating people properly. It started slow, you know, one kid would go up and be brave enough to put it there, but the time a week had gone by, kids were coming up at lunch. Signing that. And I think that's a statement, visual statement of what you believe in. I think you push for social emotional learning. I think you push for D E I in your classrooms. The holy grail of the whole thing, I think, is professional development for staff. On inclusive practices and cultural competency and bias that. Teachers don't, at least to my knowledge, don't get that in university preparation. Maybe they do now. But I don't think that that's part of their student teaching necessarily or part of the coursework that they case that they take. So you think it comes with the package. But. I certainly didn't know it. I did go out and find it. You had to take courses in that. So I think you owe it to your teachers to give them the tools and the professional development to do that. I think if you can do it, you do it in hiring practices. That I haven't sort of gone through and seen that. You know, the racial or lifestyle hiring practices, but I think you try to have some equity in your hiring practices that reflect the real world, if you can possibly do that. Still have to hire the best person for the classroom.
Meaning, are you pushing on like having a diverse pool? Is that what you're getting at? Candidates starting.
I think so. I think you should encourage that. Maybe even recruit. I've been known to co-recruit people sometimes. Not to steal somebody away from another school in an unethical kind of way, but sell what's good about the Johnson School and. Target, you know, in Maine, it's really small. So you you know the educators and other school systems and you want your school system to be the best it possibly can be. So I think going after folks that give the school a good balance, and I'm not saying it doesn't happen. I I don't know that. But I think your philosophy should be to try to make your professional staff as diverse as it can be. If everything's equal. Not to go and trump that. When you have the possibility of an equal, I think you go and you click the diversity check mark on that. So I think it makes your school stronger. I think it's a a better role model situation for kids.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Inevitably, incidents happen with kids. It's part of their growing up and incidents of bias happen. They have been here and they have been everywhere. What matters is that they're named elevated and cared for in a way that all parties learn and that the inter-party of family feels like our misrepair. How would you, how do you think about that? How would you go about making sure that that type of action is transparent, is carried out in a timely way? So that families here will know that you deeply care about this and that you will name the thing, you will name something that is wrong.
It's going to take a little while because you have to build trust. And the places that I've been, I've usually been there for a long time. So I I have that already built. Coming here, no. People would know me from the whole neighborhood. I'd have to go out and sell that. One way I would do that, and we'll talk about it later, is a neighborhood meeting. A meeting program I have talked about in one interview in which I would call up Ben if he lives in Nahum. And say, would you sponsor a meeting for the people in your neighborhood? This is a small enough area that neighborhoods are probably pretty small. If he said yes, I'd bring the refreshments. He'd invite people from around his house, not necessarily people with kids. And I'd go and bring the freshmen and sit down and we'd just thought. Philosophy and curriculum, what's good about the school and what isn't. Because I think people will do that easier when they're on their own turf and not coming into a meeting here at school that we've sponsored for this purpose. And I've done that every place I've been. So that's one way I would try to build the trust. And know me in a different way. I think with regard to evaluating incidents. Um, I think with regard to evaluating incidents of bias. First thing you do is you make sure that safety is first and foremost. In every single situation. Um, that it's also. Safe for people to come forward and confidential, they can share when they see it. That they don't have to have a fear of now it's gonna come against them. You know, now they're gonna get picked on for tattling or whatever. I, I think it's super important that you do that and never break that confidence, never break that trust. I think you need to have fair and thorough investigations. And you might need help with that. I think folks of my age sometimes have to recognize their own biases. That are there, whether they know it or not, so that they can become fair judges. I, I think when you get to the point of having to give out a cons. A consequence for behavior, it needs to be restorative. Needs to be a way that someone recognizes and wants to make the situation right again, they wanna get back to that situation. Um. I think that uh. You work with staff and students to. Teach them, and I love the phrase to upstanders and not bystanders. To really say, hey, we don't do that here. No, that's not what the, the Johnson School's about. It just disarms them both, takes away their power. You know, and they, they don't turn on that individual, that's, that's not what we stand for. I think it's important for this school, and I, I sense that it already has it. Can't prove it. But I, I feel it has it under the leadership of the folks that are here now and uh, the staff that I met. Uh, that this has a philosophy of what we stand for and what we won't stand for. And it'll be my job to make that stay and grow as much as possible. Um. Those are the, the biggest parts of it, um. I'll give one quick story on the story guys, I don't care if you. Not to do that, but. Uh, as a father. In. Maine. Probably why I was an assistant principal then. Uh, my daughter was in third grade in an all white school called Mount Desert Elementary. And she and her friend, not even knowing what they were doing. Drew a swastika on a book cover. And of course she was sent home for that, as was the other girl. She had no meaning, no understanding of what the symbol was. She didn't realize that the name Rebo. Used to be Lebo Witz. And the "it" was taken off. So that my father, who came from Germany before the Nazis took over. Wouldn't be recognized as being Jewish. And. My mother was from Maine, she was a, a god. Big bone, you know, uh, Scottish descended individual. But the. Penalty for her was for her and her father, which my wife and I. Decided to be the right thing to do was to watch Schindler's List. And we watched that. And the, the power of. The little girl in the red dress, the power of what Oscar Schindler had done for those folks. She never, ever, ever. Fell back in that kind of. Pattern of behavior, matter of fact, she. Understood, cried, saw this in third grade. So she still needed to understand the power of what she had done. But she now runs the Pan Mass Challenge every year to raise money for people that are less fortunate. And I think that incident made a difference in her life. And it was just about learning, we just watched the movie, we talked about it, what'd you learn from that? Oh dad, that was horrible. It's a girl in a little red dress, I love that. It was, it was the most powerful thing I'd ever seen, it was restored. And um. I think that's how you would handle incidents, you don't, you know, just throw a kid out of school, especially at this age level, you can't do it anyway. But uh, to be able to have it be a learning experience for a child, super, super meaningful. So. Those are the ones I would.
Um, so. It's obvious that you're very comfortable with budgets and finances, uh, but we wanted to hear some more. About how you would get the input from key stakeholders. Um, in your annual budget process and in uh, development, including staff, parents and students.
We'd start, first of all, include every stakeholder that you think of. Uh, Kevin, it's his building. And you have to honor. That, and I have to be very careful because I'm an old high school principal. So that I slide into a mode that Kevin would have to say to me, Rob, that's not your area, but we have to work together in that. And I've been able to form partnerships with the folks that I've worked with, we've been part of that. Uh, Kevin, they look at me and say, yeah, yeah, right. All the principals I work with, you know, I have no problem with that, to find out is that true or not true. But I tend to wanna be very involved in it, I think that you involve the school council. I think you would involve your, I think you call it S pack, right? For your special end, folks, and then, and get in for the. Information from them, uh, you've got to include your, your teachers. I would envision forming a. A committee that in Maine we call the slap team. We slap things around, it's the. That's where it sort of came from, it, it's the superintendent's leadership advisory team. And it's elected folks from the staff that are part of that. So that they're a check and balance for someone who tends to wanna do it all himself. And has to say, I'm thinking of doing this, what do you think? They have the, have the ability to go, Rob, I think you're crazy. You shouldn't do that, and this is why. So I would envision forming a committee like that, an advisory committee. Um. I saw your. Uh, strategic plan, I believe, on the website, but it looked like it might have been out of date. That it had flamed out in twenty two. So to me, that's right ground for getting a new strategic plan. And I believe in uh. Rolling strategic plans. Not a five year plan that you go five years and then you say, now what are we gonna do? Like you can do a three year plan and it rolls, every year it gets updated. Certain things drop off of the plan, certain things get added to the plan. But it's a living, breathing document that rolls across a three year span of time. And I think you would look at that. Um. I would hope you would have a. Five year curriculum review cycle of some kind, where certain subject areas would pop up in a given year. That this might be math and social studies here. And that's when. Resources are gonna head that direction in the budget. But next year, it's gonna be social studies and the fine arts or whatever, that you develop a rolling cycle that. You know your time's coming if you're in a certain subject area. And that's really a little bit more for a school that is K to twelve. Because you get into specific high school subject areas, but I still think it applies in the school that's A six. That you, you can look at certain areas, and I probably would start with math, and I don't know why, but I. Noticed the third grade math scores weren't quite maybe where they had been in the past or whatever. I don't know what that means, it could be a, a weaker group, um, just the way the cards were dealt. Or it could be something about the program that's being used. Because one of the things I didn't mention in the last one is, one of the biggest curriculum resources to study are. Uh, the curate reports and the DESI ed reports, in which you can look at various programs and. Find how they're rated as they compare to other programs. I couldn't find that every day math had. Been in that. Cycle. Other than math programs, I'm not saying it's a bad program. I'm just saying you can't find those reports that compare it. So. That would be my first sort of suspect that Kevin and I would talk about, is that maybe something you would start with? Maybe it's not, maybe Kevin would say, no, we need to start with X. And I'd honor that, but I think you develop a five year curriculum review cycle that you would use. Um, I think as part of the budget process, you look at enrollment studies. Uh, you try to find out what's in the pipeline, what are you gonna have for the number of kids here? You know, you're exiting a couple of really small classes. And then you've got twenty sixes or whatever in some of the lower grades. Um, looking at birth studies, I think are important. I think as part of a budget um. Development, you look at a three to five year maintenance plan. I know that Tony's made this statement, I'm gonna leave this place in really, really good shape, Rob, except for Jim Roof. An ice cream company, you better fix that room.
I have an announcement, they found the coffee.
Remembering that in the last five years, it can be done three times, so fifteen years from now, because a fully replaced gym roof. With all these layers and stuff like that, you're gonna have to have a bond and borrow money or whatever. I'm not saying that's not the way you should go, maybe it is time to. If the interest rates were a little lower, that it would be the time to strike and really replace it permanently. But if that's the only thing that's left here, Tony walked me around, it was amazing how. Well, this building is kept up for an older building, you have really. Proud and hardworking custodians from what I can see. Um, I think you have kids that don't destroy the building, you don't see graffiti around in different places, you don't see. Doors bent off of uh, restrooms. Many schools, that's what you see when you go in. And they don't take you to certain places. You know, on, on your tour.
Show you the bathroom, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd go in as fast as I could to many little places in this building. And he's done amazing things with regard to safety, and if that's the only thing that's left is the gym roof. Um. That's amazing. Like your legacy to pass on to whoever the future superintendent is, rather than uh, let the next person do it, let the next. Gal do it, then get the next gentleman to it. So. As an outsider looking in, I think you can be very proud of what he's done with regard to that.
Sure, big thanks.
My chance in public to say that. No, he didn't have to do that, he could have just said nah. You know, to leave a, a place better than when you found it. I think is always what you want your goal to be when you're a leader, so.
That's why we're doing the policies right there with you, yeah.
I would try to get input from many different sources, but. I'm a pretty, you know. It's one of the things I brag about on my budget ability skills, and therefore sometimes I may not. Allow enough input into it, would have to make sure that I'm not just walk into a, something that's a comfort zone. And think that, oh, I'm just gonna do the same thing. It should be totally different. In places I've been, e- except this little interim gig, been long periods of time, Rockport was ten years. Um, Mount Desert Island was uh, twenty one years. And so you just sort of got in a mode where you just did what you were gonna do and you listened to people. But you didn't have an official process for doing that. I think we did good stuff. But I think it's important to certainly in a new job, listen to stakeholders. Where you're gonna turn them off real fast, and that's not a good thing, so.
Okay, lastly, so I, I'm hoping that you have a, um, a list of the core values, I'm gonna read, okay. I'm gonna read off the seven core values and then I'm just hoping that you can talk to us about how you'll cultivate an environment that embodies them, so. The first is set high expectations and standards for teaching and learning, second is create a culture of integrity, responsibility and pride. Third, educate the whole child, striving for academic, artistic, physical and interpersonal excellence. Fourth, collaborate and engage to foster educational innovation and experimentation using hands-on approaches. Five, recognize, respect and celebrate the uniqueness and dignity of diverse individuals and groups. Six, cultivate respect among students, faculty, staff and parents for one another as well as for the world around us. And lastly, encourage and support parental and larger community engagement and involvement in student life.
Maybe this. Setting high expectations, I think uh. Again, that's sort of what I talked about in terms of some superintendents in a job, is, is to set the tone, to model that. Um. I'm sort of known for a pretty uh. Unique opening day speech. Where uh, I hope we have the opportunity to get all the faculty together. And I do a Howard Point, there's a lot of poems in it, there's a lot of things about what it means to be a child. You know, what it means to. To grow up in the world we're at. And I put my heart and soul into that, to try to. Have folks. Understand the responsibility of the. Position of trust that they have. And I think one of my letters says something that's, I believe it's from the chairman in Rockport, because he'd always go. And Bruce Carr would go, the state senator would go, and I never intended to do this, but. He would say that the first three or four rows would be in tears. I didn't need to do that, I was just talking about what it was, you know, what it's meant to. Be a child in a classroom these days. And how you can't forget that, how you have to understand and flip that and look at that. And I usually do it with pictures of their own kids. There, there was one teacher that had said, you're not gonna do that poem again, are you? Yep, I'm gonna do it for ten years, it's gonna be a ten year, I'm gonna do it every single year. I think it's stupid, I heard it, I heard it, so, no, it's not stupid, the words are universal. The last year I was there, it was her grandson Jack. She's in town, so there you go, now you understand the power of what Jack is gonna confront. When he's not underneath your control, when he's underneath somebody else for six or seven hours a day, and how important that trust is. And. She wrote me her version of the poem when I retired from Rockport. So. I try to set the tone, I think that's extremely important for expectations. I think you uh, value the work that goes on, I think you get into classes a lot. I'd like to carry a pad of note cards in my pocket. So if I go into um. Your classroom. And I watch that classroom, I'm not evaluating. I'll leave you a little. Personal handwritten note. About something good I saw, fold it up, put your name on it, put it on your desk. And. Teachers have that on their wall. You know, they put them up there because it was handwritten. And came from the heart, I didn't invent that, somebody taught me to do that, he says, Rob, don't go in and do an email. Write him a personal note. And people valued that, when I retired in Rockport, that's what they gave me, were index cards with personal notes to me. And I've gotten good packages, like I read on the other day, here's one down here, it didn't reverse. You know, what it had meant for me to have been their superintendent for ten years. And things I never had even thought of. So I think high expectations are modeled from the top. I believe you push for something I call the six Rs in your expectations, you push for relationships. And in a school like this, they've gotta be strong, I think you push for relevance. That what is taught, a kid can relate to, that they can understand it. I, I think you push for rigor. Um, because again, I think you challenge a kid to go further than what they think they can go. I think you respect and. Hope for resiliency, you know, kids are gonna have some tough situations. You're gonna think they're headed down the wrong road or. Not able to get this or that, but to push for. Respecting and cultivating resiliency is one of the Rs. And then I think the ultimates are um. Respect and responsibility. I, I think you can teach kids at this age that uh, you do respect each other, you do respect adults. Uh, that, that you do have some responsibilities. To your fellow students, to your school, to your community, to your parents, and that you. Expect that to be there and be embedded in the curriculum, that it's always there, those six Rs are there. It's not just about reading, writing and written text. It's about all those other Rs. So that's all I feel about the first one.
Great.
The culture of integrity, responsibility and pride, for the second. Um. I'll probably say this fifty times, I think you set the tone again from the top. I think you're visible. Um. I think the idea of that school pledges in book. And then instituting, instituting programs of diversity, equity, inclusion. And social emotional learning are extremely important to. Generate in young people a sense of integrity, responsibility and pride. In themselves, in their friends, in their classmates, uh, in their teachers and in their school, that, that's a really important part. Educating the whole child. Um. I believe have a well-rounded curriculum, I don't know how strong your music program is, but every place I've been. The music program has been huge, so. Kids in music programs learn in different ways. And it makes them better learners in the classroom, so that even though a lot of people would say, well, that's extra. It's not extra, it's part of the core. It it's part of how kids learn and why they wanna be in school. So I think you advocate for that, when you get your budget meetings, you say, we've gotta have this program, we've gotta have that program. And it's not just about the core of of us. Um, I think you push for differentiation, I think you push for uh remediation, I think you push for acceleration in the curriculum. That those are extremely important to educate the whole child. That kids learn in different ways, they have different learning styles, that they come to you with different positions. And your job as an educator is find that out, to see that. And then to find where that button is for that kid. And if they need a little extra help, that you're able to slide that direction. If a kid seems to be, you know, Kevin's sort of zoning out or whatever, and all of us, he was thinking about his lobstering career. You make the math question into a question for him that's about the number of lobster traps it takes and where he's gonna put them. And he does the math problem that way, all of a sudden he says, well, I I get it. There's a purpose to this, so I think it's important to 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 push for that and that you. Tie your teaching to the child, to their hopes and their dreams and their passions. I remember the things I wanted to do. And I'm not sure my teachers I had validated that back when I was there, they stood up on the board, they had chalk and they just wrote. And whatever it was, they put on a board. And we spit it back. But did it really mean something to me that it helped me? Did they know how I learned and did they know I was a visual learner? No, they had no clue. What's going on with Rob, they would say, you know, it's cuz Rob needs to see, not just hear from you constantly and watch you writing on a board. Maybe Rob needs it presented to him in four or five different ways. And our educators are much, much better than that, than they were back when Kevin was in school or when Tony was in school in, what, nineteen twenty-one?
My, my class made.
I just wanted to wake him up.
My class made Abraham Lincoln. Did very well.
So, that's how I feel about that, and I'm passionate about that. Really passionate about that piece, about educating our whole kid, really knowing a kid really well. I've always taught a class when I, when I did in school. I I teach a navigation class. And it's about um taking a trip somewhere from, actually, the last trip. The course we did was for kids in Rockport. It was about this size, and they all got to go on the internet, buy a boat. Cuz I gave them three hundred thousand dollars, they could buy whatever kind of boat they wanted. And then we were gonna take a boat trip from Boston to Maine. And what they had to do was plan it all out. Without GPS, without radar, charts and compasses and time. Figure out where they were gonna stay, how far they could go in a certain day, um, where they would shop, and they'd do all that kind of research and write about it. And I taught that class to kids. Now, whether I could do it here or not, whether it would matter. And then the final exam was, we'd take my own boat, the kids would get on there and they'd actually do it live, in in real life situation. So they were no longer in a cinnabar. They named their boats and they did whatever and we took a trip and went all the way. Up to Maine, so. I'm not sure that's the exact answer to the question, but I think that's. Extremely important for kids to see their superintendent, to see their principal in a different way than just, oh, they. Get mad at us, they do this or that, I mean, Kevin sits in a hallway. It's one of the most impressive things I saw, and I came and I said, bicycle hall. Way to go, Kevin, you know, cuz kids, they gotta see him in a different way than just behind a closed door and you only see him when you're in trouble. So I think that's very important. Um, fostering innovation, you you folks do really, really well with that. Um, I think you've gotta have a culture that um allows for appropriate risk-taking. Um, teachers wanna try something, that you give them a chance to do it, as long as they can substantiate how they do it. Um, you use your local resources really well already, um, I would hope to be able to make that stronger. I don't know how much project-based learning you do. But I think that's a wave of the future that you can really, really work to an advantage. And I'm thinking that would help you fostering, you know, innovation and certainly hands-on. And to have it be about maybe a a town problem. They had a situation in Bar Harbor, Maine, because all the cruise boats go there. They have three cruise ships a day coming to Bar Harbor, which is about as big as this little bay when you come down off to the right of the Causeway. And what do those cruise ships do? They dump their waste, they're not supposed to. But then the waste gets in the water and kills the clams, which then starve the fish, and the kids did a study of that. And developed the rules about cruise ships and the penalties that were there for dumping waste. And they had gone to each storm drain in the town of Bar Harbor and had stenciled, no waste here. And what that did was teach all those tourists that come flying to Bar Harbor. Flying to Mahaba with his own during beach season, from dumping their waste. Because it drains into the bay, that was part of the the stencil they put on there. So to me, that was a hands-on, real-life, giving back to their community and to their future project that they had done. I think they learned a lot, learned to be a good voter, um, right now they put a limit on the cruise ships now. Can't have three a day anymore, you have two a day, you can't put more than five thousand people ashore in one day. Which they were putting fifteen thousand ashore. And that was just overwhelming everything about a natural beauty of the Canadian National Park. And the kids were responsible for that, so to me, that's really important. Recognize, respect and celebrate unique. And um special aspects of individuals and groups. Think you make sure that's integrated into your curriculum. That it's embedded in the curriculum, you do it through uh inclusive practices, you do it through cultural-based competencies and uh. You find ways to celebrate all kinds of different aspects of uh religions and cultures. Whether you have those cultures or not, that you learn about those. And that you celebrate those. Cultivate respect between all. Again, I had set the tone from the top. I think that's uh Kevin's and my responsibility, you know, to do that, to. Have people understand that here's what we do and there's what we don't do. But in a nice way, not in a, you know, cop with a vest on kind of way, but in a, that's that's not what we believe in. And I think, I believe in human nature. And I I think people wanna be that way, I think they wanna do well, I think they wanna um. Need, if 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 they possibly can. Um, I think another way to cultivate uh cultivate respect is through using restorative practices. For consequences of restorative justice, that you figure out ways by which uh Ben gives back if he makes a mistake. You know, he dumps chocolate milk on a kid's head in the cafeteria, which I had that. And I had to talk to you about, why did you do that? You had no idea why you did it, cuz you thought it was cool for everybody else. But instead of just saying, okay, you're kicked out for five days. It was what can you do to make that right? What can you do for that little girl who you dumped chocolate milk on her head? And you come up with some ways to try to make that the right situation again. And we work really hard for you to be restored in your practice.
Rob, can I ask you a proper question about that?
Yep.
Um, I'm also a fan of that, um, using restorative practice, um. For all the reasons that you uh you ran into this conversation. What do you, how would you handle it if a parent did not want their child to do something restorative and push back on you? And let's say you already established this as a.
Unfortunately, it probably trumps back to the standard discipline anti-up that's in the handbook. But uh I can remember, you know, saying to kids, uh, this is high school level, cuz my background was high school. You know, you were uh drinking on the class trip, we went to Chicago and you brought alcohol with you and served it to all the rest of the band. Had some ten-day suspension from school and whatever, or we'll waive five of those days. If you can help me come up with some things that would make that right again. In terms of your own self, in terms of you getting um, you know, meeting with a counselor and developing some some ways to put yourself back on track. But also maybe talking to younger grades about the effect of what you had done, because the school, they'd canceled all. Overseas trips and all trips around the country, because couldn't have the kids going and drinking and. In Prague or whatever, and um like teaching the young kids that I lost that, I was the reason why they didn't have trips for four years. To teach that to younger kids is restorative, it's giving back. And um then you waive some of the days, you plea bargain it, I guess it would be called in a courtroom. But I think that's part of a restorative process, that you can have a left road that is just, just a penalty. Where you can have a way that tries to make it right again, and a parent says, my kid is not gonna do that, that's fine. Then I don't think you can trump the parents' desires with regard to that. Hopefully you could educate them as to what you were trying to do. And again, I believe in human nature, I think most parents would say, alright, I get it. You're not just forcing my kid to to do uh, you know, clean up in the cafeteria for a week because they threw food or whatever. You know, to try to make that right again, you weren't trying to embarrass them in front of their friends, you were trying to, you know, have them give back to a hard-working uh. You know, kitchen person, oh, you have a wonderful person in your cafeteria. If kids trash that place and. It's not right, not right for her. And the penalty might be to, when they're not help serve food for a week, whatever. Or see what she does and what she goes through to have to make. Pizza, I guess, most of the time, right, or whatever, but uh, you know, and I just think you try to. Repair the damage that you have done, cuz sometimes kids, they just don't think. When they do their behaviors, they're in males, the frontal lobe is not very well-developed, certain ages. And they do things that they wouldn't normally do, right, and they go, I have no idea why I did that. Well, you still did it, there's an effect of that, they try to make it right, and to have them be part of that. I think if it's explained that way to a parent, the parent will say, okay, you're not trying to embarrass my kid, you're not trying to settle up. You're trying to get them to really learn from it so that they don't do it again. And maybe to convince others not to do what they had done. So I think that's, to me, the principles of restorative practices are based on that. And then the final one you had was encourage uh parental and community involvement. What a perfect place to do that, right, and what do you, um, one square mile or whatever it is? I drive down the causeway. It's amazing. Where does it have the smallest municipality? But it's dense and diverse and whatever. A lot of places, it just are all sprawls or anything. This is ideal for that, so I think you encourage volunteers, I think you have uh folks come in and read to kids, I think you have them mentor kids. I think you um. Look for ways that they might take fifth and sixth graders on job shadows and that kind of thing. I can remember the way I learned the most in Maine, Port County Island. Um, much smaller than this, was by sitting on the end of the dock where all the older guys would gather. And we'd just sort of sneak around and listen to them.
I bet you learned a lot.
But they weren't swearing and doing all that and doing drugs, they were talking about the weather and whether it was okay to go out in a boat or not. And I just was listening to them like they were, they were God, but. They taught me about respect and taught me about hard work, um. I was just a little guy, that's where we wanted to go, we wanted to go down there, listen to those guys. And they'd allow us to be there. It wasn't a designed program, it just happened. Doesn't happen that way anymore, you gotta cultivate, you have to make it happen. So I think that's important, that you're possibly having the Council on Aging coming here. What a perfect opportunity to include them in the lives of young kids. In so many different ways, that what many look at, oh, how are we gonna do that, moving into space, might be, I could do this, I could do that, I could do this. And the rich experiences that those folks might have. You know, they're all older and retired, but what they could give to a kid about inspiration and motivation. Might make the difference, might be the one thing that says, alright, I get it, I wanna do what you did. Because they just listen to the person. Now, I think the final thing is uh, and I talked about it before. Uh, that I would have to build trust and relationships and be visible and be present. And that's the hardest part of any new job that I ever take. Is I value that, and it's not turned to. And they could Google my name and find X, Y or Z, but they have no idea what I'm about. Where I was in Maine, they knew everything about me and probably too much about. But they trusted me to be their principal, they trusted me to be their superintendent. And they're trusting me now to help them reorganize their school system. Into something different than what they are, so. I I I think parents, community members, uh, they've got time, they can commit, they can help out. And commit on career days and things like that, that you can have. All kinds of fertile ground for that. Those are really good.
Thank you very much, that was great. So appreciate your, and thank you, I really appreciate the time that you've taken.
Oh, I had to make my notes, my notes are.
Mine too.
It's either like a Unabomber or it's like. It's a beautiful vine.
Yes.
Whatever, but I just. I sat down today watching, my favorite spot when I come to the office, right down by the gate into the northeastern uh complex. Back in my truck and then I looked out at uh, it's a gull rock or something like that, cuz I'm looking up. Egg rock, right, but it's uh where birds grow, right? And their eggs and stuff like that, how many egg rocks there are on the Maine coast, there's like nine of them. All the way down, egg rock, egg rock, egg rock, egg rock. Cuz they'd always name stuff, but they would look like. One little island up there called Shingle Island, and it goes like this, looks just like a shingle. And there's no trees on it, just granite, it's in the middle of a bay, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate.
Appreciate it.
You can give a little bit to answer your question.
Yes, yes, very, very. And in all fairness to you, you have.
I always ask that eternal question, what's your next step?
Yes, oh, so we are going to um begin the discussion of like. deliberations, you're more than welcome to stay for that, and as you know, it's public, so.
So you're wondering if I wanna stay, or, yeah, just in. One way or the other, I'll stay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was a unique opportunity and you should be really, really proud of what you have, you don't find this in a lot of places. Sure, it's not perfect.
Not yet, I'm working on it still.
From an outsider's perspective. Pretty darn good place.
Thank you.
I think Tony would say that, right?
Shit.
You'll be, isn't it?
Get all my eyes in here. You're gonna get.
It has to mention. You're a lesbian, I wasn't a lesbian. Why do this? So let's.
Is everyone stretching? Everyone taking?
Yes. So we are about to begin.
Yes, so we are about to begin the discussion about our next year. But before we explain the process, I recommend that you, so I would like to caution all of us, about the nature of the conference where a candidate. The candidate has subjected himself to the challenge of becoming a public figure during the process. Everything that we say, as you know, is a matter of public record. And praise for and criticism becomes available for anyone to access as a result. So even well-intended remarks, they can be repeated, it can be reported, they can be taken out of context. Whenever a future employer considers a candidate, sure. So for those reasons, just please use your best judgment and discretion. And explaining your preference and telling the public why or why you are not, supporting a particular individual. Negative comments which may represent your opinion and which are your right to present, can attach to candidates' fact, as they mention their reputation. So with that said, I just wanted to describe the process. And the process is that the appointment of a superintendent will require at least three affirmative votes for our candidate. So that said, is there a motion relative to the election of a superintendent of schools? And before we go into that, I'd like to have a discussion. So we consent, would anyone like to speak? Sure.
I'll talk first because sometimes I have trouble getting my thoughts together and if I hear somebody else talk first, then I'll be embarrassed of my statement. Um, I will say, um, so through the initial interview we did and the interview tonight, and then listening to the prior interviews and reading through uh, the letters of recommendation, it's very clear that um, Mr. Lebo really cares about, you know, his career and, and working as a superintendent and, and brings a lot of pride in his work, um, to this, you know, potential uh, position. Um, throughout, you know, all of the information provided, um, you know, that he, there's a lot of strengths in terms of, um, you know, deliberation with um, contract negotiations and budget, uh, a lot of deep knowledge in the workings of a school. And, and those are the core of being a superintendent, which is really important. But I think what really stood out to me most of all is just, um, you know, the, the really respectful way of um, leadership. Um, many, many, many times there was reference to this being Mr. Andrews's school, and that it would be a partnership, so it's very clear, it's not a top-down sort of leadership. Um, and that there, you know, there's a lot of pride and emotion into, um, into the career. And so that's really what stood out to me most consistently through the interview process is, um, just a deep passion for um, teaching and education and supporting the educated process. A lot of experience in small communities like our own, which um, you know, it's, it's, it's really a gem. And so to be able to have somebody that has experience in these types of communities and leaving it better than they found it is, sounds really refreshing.
To go off of Gina's points, um, I agree with her and, I think when you have somebody who is repetitive in their answers to things such as, leadership and collaboration and the goal of, of the superintendent's, potential superintendent's, you know, it really spoke to me about the collaboration with everybody, all the stakeholders. Uh, genuine care to make this school be the best that it can be. Um, and on top of all of the experience that, um, he's presented in Gina's letters and the interviews. Um, I would be very excited to support Mr. Lebo.
Bathroom. Yeah. Um, I was really happy with how the interview went, but tonight, um, my face has just been smiling the whole time. Um, I think that, you know, words that jump out at me are like, you know, I think he focuses on, respect for the community, respect for the staff, respect for, including Mr. Andrews, I think it would be a good partnership. The deep passion and empathy I think he feels for the kids, like adjusting learning for the child. Now, it almost seems like he focuses on not having kids feel guilty for mistakes because we know that they make mistakes. And so he sees the whole child, and I think that that's unique in a superintendent. Um, so I'm really pleased um, with how, how it went. I think that some of the ideas he came up with were really exciting. Um, to better our curriculum and our programming for the kids and exposure for the kids, so. I'm really excited about the opportunity to have him here.
Um, thanks, guys. I uh, I, I agree with everything that's been said, I feel uh, very refreshed after that, that conversation. Um, which feels good, and so I just wanted to mention a few things that stood out for me that, that feel important, that would um, admit what you said. So I'm, when uh, Mr. Lebo was talking about um, curriculum and instruction, I, there was a couple of places that he went that I thought were really insightful. One was um, around talking about how uh, everybody benefits from a diverse environment. Uh, which we heard in his answer to the diversity question, but I really appreciated the answer inside of the curriculum question even more. Um, in talking, I appreciate the care that he went to, to look at our demographics and think about what that meant in terms of a learning journey for all kids. And thinking about how our, and I think about this all the time as an educator, how are our young people that are in predominantly white environments and monofermatic environments gonna be ready for increasingly diverse worlds? And I love that he's thinking about that, I think it is so, um, he called himself uh, traditional in a few different instances. Um, and I, I found this to be actually very, very important. And um, uh, and I appreciate that. To go to traditional, I loved the narrative around um, creating a culture of gratitude towards school. Through things like um, cleanups and thank you moments, and I feel like we've lost some of that. Just feels lovely to say that, um, I love the answer about working with Pam Angelakis around, uh, the looking at pacing and curriculum alignment and having teachers come in and meet um, the teachers here and vice versa. I thought that was powerful and I saw a lot of non-oral cues around that for real. Um, I thought, um, after a non-exhausting eleven hour day, it was wonderful to hear. Um, so you were deep on all of these questions, including the question around building an inclusive environment to be good for all kids. And I, I really appreciate that. Um, and you know, there's, there's more, the last thing that I'll, the only last thing I'll say is that, um, I think Mr. Lebo is very, very, um, I think he already gets the, what we often talk about, that there's something magical about our community here. And um, I think he comes with the experience from being in Maine to be open to that magic. And has um, already started to develop that deep curiosity about that, that makes me as a parent just feel.
Yes, and I, I agree with everything that is said here, but for me, what has really stood out, I mean, you've said it time and time again. For you, it's all about putting children first. And for me, that's why I'm here, because it's all about putting children first. And then trust, I think trust is so important, building trust within the community, especially a community. And building relationships, it's absolutely correct. And I do see, you know, that you do have. And you've had some fabulous letters of recognition. I think that personally, it would be a wonder. So with that said, um, is there a motion relative to the election of a superintendent of schools? And if so, there is specific verbiage to that motion, so would anyone like the verbiage for that motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that Robert Levo be appointed superintendent of schools for Nahat effective July first of two thousand twenty-four, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate in the school committee and signed by both parties for their design needs. Second. Roll call, I'll do a roll call vote.
Could you just say aye or nay?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Michelle.
Aye, Anna.
Aye, Kay. Congratulations.
I'm always honored and I might just not to let it go around that. And what's a July first, with Tommy's permission and Kevin's permission. My job in Maine is only four days and you're gonna come back, I'm allowed to sort of appear on Fridays just to be around. Um, I'd love to be able to have the opportunity to do that on some Fridays, just to, go into classes, see kids in a different way and non-pressure kind of way. Um, but I also understand as to, no, you don't do that till it's time, so I, I would offer that up. Only because I think it's important to be able to hit the ground running. And um, but I'd leave that to both these fine gentlemen to discuss that, but it's a, it's an offer I'd like to be able to at least put on the table.
Thank you, thank you, and I want to congratulate each gentleman on that one, but thanks for this. Thanks for coming back. Thank you. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Alright.
Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations, welcome. Yeah, be careful on the way, it's a long drive. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good night, good night, thank you.
I'm not sure you are the other way.
Is there?
It comes, probably you're down.
We still have a lot of effort, you know, right? Yes. But it's customary to take a small break.
Yes. Actually, is it okay if I look over my water?
We'll take a small five minute break. We'll be back, everyone. Welcome back, everyone. So before we dive into the agenda, I just wanna thank Glenn and Alicia from MASC. But most importantly, I'd like to thank our superintendent. Yeah, this is not easy. You will be missed, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you these past few years. Guidance, leadership. There are no ones.
You are very, very welcome, it's been really your pleasure and an honor to be here. And we will finish strong.
We still have you for a few more minutes. We will finish strong, but most importantly, that it's not goodbye, you know, meets the serve.
Thank you.
So moving on to, yes, and of course, I would like to thank the screening committee for your guidance and your help along this process and my fellow school committee. I know this has been a nice process and a new one for us all, so I've certainly learned a lot.
And thank you for all the work that you've done, and everybody you've dedicated a lot of your time to making this a successful process.
Well, my pleasure, really, as I said, it's all about the kids.
It sure is.
So with that said, let's move on to like blasting through this agenda.
I love it.
Alright, so has everyone had a chance to read and approve our minutes from our meeting of last week, March twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Are there any changes, edits needed?
No.
If not, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting, three twenty-six, twenty-four.
I'll second the motion. And a third, okay? So hello for anyone that might be watching out there, and welcome. Has anyone received any correspondence and or community input?
No.
No. Would any members of the community like to speak?
Nope, no hands raised.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, the MASC distributed a survey. And I think it perhaps should be in the minutes that the members of the school committee received the results.
As community response.
Of the um, surveys as part of community correspondence. Just so people know that uh, who have taken the time to fill out the questionnaire, uh, that it was taken very seriously by the school committee members and read very carefully.
That's thank you.
And thank you to those that did respond to the survey, yes. So now we can move on to the examination and authorization for payment of bills.
Madam Chair, it is horrifying to me that every month isn't like this month. The total this month is thirteen thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
It's only that a week.
They were all at this level, and this is very typical, um, teaching materials from Amazon, stop and shop foods, sushi, pizza, lunches, um, a Verizon bill, a leasing bill for our copier, and um, and one contracted services bill. And I respectfully ask someone to the school to me to make a motion to approve thirteen thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to accept the bills this month on uh, four to twenty-four, the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
I second all in favor. I think moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
I'm glad to hear about the slitty's update, not the jump.
As of today, the two, two of the water fountains now have filter systems connected to them. Uh, the new uh, water bottle filling station and um, bubbler will be installed um, during the uh, April vacation. And then that part of the upgrades will be done. Uh, and the flip charts have been ordered and there's one more detail in terms of color and layout that have to be made. And then with the flip charts and the uh, finishing of the uh, plumbing for the um, water filling station and bubbler, the only thing still outstanding is that the video upgrade and ninety-nine percent of that has been completed, the cameras are um, installed, they are functioning. But the internet connection needed um, more ports. And today I authorized those ports to be whatever they're done.
Opened.
Opened.
Yeah.
I guess, there, there, I guess there have been just a bunch of numbers. Um, and that's the only thing left, that will enable uh, Mr. Andrews, myself, Mr. Levo, and uh, and the police department and fire department to go online and see all of the cameras. and and the police department and fire department to go online and see all of the cameras. Right now, I only have 12 of, no, 16 of them.
16, yeah.
And then eventually I would have, there would be 20 visible. So it's those four that are causing us some issues. And obviously, I didn't pay the bill. When the video upgrade is completed and the flip charts come and we get and we pay the invoice, we will have spent $49,620.51 of the $50,000. So we have, you know, approximately $380 hanging out there in case anybody has a good idea for a security or a safety measure that costs $380. Mr. Andrews chose not to make a principal's report, but I do want to make a principal's report from afar that the MCAS is going very, very well. Mr. Andrews has organized it. We have supervision. We have students who need accommodations, are getting all their accommodations if they have it on their IDP. You can't just give an accommodation for the test. The accommodation has to be one for the learning process and the test. So it's not like a parent can say, for example, you know, I want my child to have accommodations for the MCAS. It's not the way it works. It has to be in the IDP process. So I wanted to commend Mr. Andrews, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, and the students. I also didn't want the school committee to know that at this age, the MCAS generally is taken very seriously, but not universally. We have had a small number of students finish their MCAS test in under 20 minutes. Now, I'm saying that to you because when those results come in, it's going to look like our teachers and our principal did not perhaps do as good a job as they really did in that particular subject. And there's just no way to avoid that. In large districts, you have parents opting their children out, which they can't do.
Right.
So that's a zero. And that gets counted in through the scores. So I just wanted you to know that. Parents who don't agree with standardized testing, who think, you know, there's too much standardized testing in the world. They want the, they want their children to have more of an eclectic education. Children, and I mean high school kids too, not just elementary kids, refuse to take the test. But the state has decided that that's not an option. Originally, they allowed it way back when MCAS was testing was first inaugurated, but no, no more.
Interesting, okay.
Okay. And again, that's not a negative, it's just a reality. You know, the vast percentage of our students take it very seriously, they work hard, and they will get appropriate response, results. Our candidate mentioned the COA, the Council on Aging. And I had mentioned that to him during the tour. And if you feel left out of a loop, I apologize, that would be my fault. But I do want you to know that at your next meeting, the town administrator will be here electronically. You will have a set of plans in front of you and you will see what is potential. At this point, the plans have not been priced. Nothing is final. It is simply a proposed change that is being looked at. The town has some grant money. My guess is that the amount of grant money as compared to the actual cost of the construction involved will cover a percentage of it. And it may even be a low percentage. So then that would have to go to town meeting as a proposal. If you approved it, obviously, you, your approval would be the first. Then it would have to go to town meeting, and we're not talking about town meeting 2024. We're talking about town meeting 2025. Then the plans would have to be finalized and actually architectural plans. Then they would have to be approved. So my guess is that the earliest anything could actually happen would be the summer of 2026 for the opening of school in September of 2026. So it's two years plus out there, if at all.
So the last time Tony came to one of our meetings, it was for discussion. Is this for discussion and deliberation, like a potential vote on our draft meeting?
That would be up to the chair. This is for a report from the town administrator on what he, the Council on Aging Director, and I have been informed by the architects.
Yeah, there's something that he wants to present to us.
The initial plan. And the town administrator wants to present that to you so that you feel as intimately involved in the process. And there could be no motion. Excuse me, you could make a motion without knowing how much it's going to cost, but I would recommend that you don't even consider that. And if the cost comes in at X times the grant, the town may pull it. They may say, you know, or they may say, yeah, the board of select may say, yeah, we're gonna put that on the the town meeting of 2025 for a vote in terms of the money. Then you would have all next year up until this time to decide what your opinion is. Or you may choose to do it before the decision of whether to put it, put it before town meeting. There's several ways of doing it. It would seem premature to even think about it now because you need to know how much it's going to cost. You need to know if the town's making it forward. The process, in other words, the process would involve your approval, support by the finance committee, and then the town meeting, so it's multi-step.
I just wasn't sure at what point our vote comes in those steps.
Yeah, yours would be early
Yeah.
because the finance committee would not want to deliberate upon it if you're not in support of it. That would be my guess, nor would the board of selectmen. Just so you know, we're sitting in the library. If the library became part of the COA.
Right. Collectively.
Both, both of these rooms. Plenty big, nice, actually much nice.
We're actually in one floor below, but same rooms.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
The South Central Library, as we see this thing.
That's right.
Air conditioning.
Also.
That could be one of your
Stimulations.
Stimulations, that's correct. There. And I would recommend partly that you do so. We don't want to you lose a large area for meetings in the hot weather. I mean, you have your school committee meetings there.
Oh, yeah, we do, we do.
And when the weather is very hot.
I definitely think, you know, the structure, structure and safety, you know, in terms of like you've done such a great job at making sure that whoever has access to this building and, you know, or even doesn't have access to this building, that the people and the kids are all safe and so, you know, I think you can't, you can't ever relax with that. And with this, we would have to ensure that that same standard is met.
Yeah.
Yes.
The plan calls for a separation entrance so that the COA space is not directly contiguous without locked entries to the school.
Okay. Locked, safety glass, like, you know, all of those things.
Yeah, and again, you know, we can have a conversation, you know, later in the spring, you know, after we see what Tony presents about your your requests slash requirements slash demands, you know, however you want to view it.
I appreciate that, Father Michelle, we're depending on the intervention, but I, I'm not against this approach at all. The kids' safety, getting independent on somebody outside of the school department. The school department has to be in control.
I can assure you that when I met with the architects, I was very clear that there would have to be a demarcation that was not two-way.
Yeah.
That would protect our children at all times. The roof.
Here we go, here we go.
So, thanks to Vinnie, who had a contact with a company. I have an appraisal for what's called roof extender. It's a commercial product. If you're interested in the chemical nature of it, Michelle, it's, I have it. If anybody knows what RX 700 means. But it's basically a white rolled-on surface that would go right over the roof of the gym as it exists. The roof would be fully prepared, any loose substances would be taken off, the substrate would be cleaned, all damage would be seamed with rubber and repaired. The peak would be repaired, any loose flashing and repairs would be made. And then two coats of this substance would be put on. The guarantee is for five years and it can be done three times. Now, the guarantee is five, that doesn't mean it won't last longer because the gym roof's in perfect condition.
Not leaking.
A, it's not leaking, and B, it has no trees, it gets no acid, it does get salt, of course. But this stuff is pretty, pretty amazing. I also want you to know that I did the following. I sent an email to Alison Nieto and Tony Barletto after I got the the proposal, it's for $25,000. So what I said inclusive, including trash removal, everything. So what I said to them was, here it is, I sent it to them. This is going to reduce any surplus we may have this year. So if this is a tight year for free cash, you may prefer that it be delayed until the following fiscal year. If in fact we went forward, we would not go forward until the very end of this fiscal year and I would encumber the funds. And it would be done in the summer after I was gone. And the reason for that is I want to make sure we have the money. I want to also make sure I know how much we're going to have unspent because we did get those two grants from the state, which will help us immensely with our out-of-district tuitions. We're already out of that money.
Right.
We've spent 100% of it. So a large portion of that money is going to be, have to be journal entry back to balance our books between now and June. We have a couple of things going for us. One is that one of the most expensive students is going to graduate a month before the end of the year, so that's one less month. And the state has seen fit to extend $212,000 total to us. And that money will come in May. So what we're going to be doing in the interim is spending the money, running a deficit, and then journal entry the money back to make the books balance. So until I have that money actually in hand in May and we journal entry it back, I'm not real sure how much money we're going to have at the end of the year. That's why I asked Tony and Alison, is it a tight year for free cash? Because the same exact thing can happen, except we do it after July 1st with 26 months. In fact, the work could be done exactly at the same timeframe, except the money is coming from a different fiscal year. Right? I didn't get a response, I just, I just sent that to them. I just got this today.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles too. Charles, is that from that? No, who said it?
They didn't, they didn't. Okay, I also want you to know that today I sent the chair the domestic violence policy that you just voted. And if you remember, you voted it that, quote, "The leave will always be a paid leave." I want to give you a history. On March 12th, I emailed the town administrator and say, I know you have a policy. I want our policy to be somewhat like yours, so would you ask, would you look at this? He turned it over to KP Law, the town attorney, and they responded to us on March 28th, the day after you voted your policy. So depending upon what the chair decides, we have several things we can do. One of them is nothing.
What was their response?
What was whose response? Oh, the town attorney? The town attorney gave me an entirely different class. Now, I haven't read through it yet to see how much of the substance of this is different than the substance of the one we approved, but I will, I promise you I will.
And remind us, was it the, is it just 15 days? Is that true? The policy, or then?
I'm not sure.
It was a time limit.
It's 15 days in any 12-month period. And you, and there are very specific requirements prior to being eligible for the domestic violence leave policy. By the way, those I did check, they are all the same in both policies. I think basically the only change that's substantive, and and I'm saying this tentatively, since I didn't really put them side by side and spend a lot of time with either of them, is that yours requires the leave to be paid, theirs retains the employer shall have sole discretion in determining if it shall be paid. But I will, I will look at them. So one, one option is to do nothing. The other option is to put it back on the table, to study both of them and to decide if you do want to do something. And then, of course, then that would have to be two meetings. A first reading for a change and the second reading to incorporate it, which we just did.
Does KP Law know that we approved it the day before that they wrote back?
No, because
I was curious because
But I didn't get any response, so
Okay.
We just went forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, you know me, we always go forward. Okay. And I think my agenda got buried in here.
That's would be the other, if you have more.
So let me bring you somewhat up to speed just a little bit on personnel. I want to commend the principal and several members of the community and our staff. We have been moving forward with the hiring process. We need to hire three teachers for two retirements and sixth grade. We need to hire a health and physical education teacher because the current one is a substitute for our health and physical education teacher who left because she moved early in the school year. And we, as of this morning at 9:00 a.m., have to hire a custodian.
A custodian.
Vinnie and his family are, have decided to split residences between a warm state, which I Have decided to uh split residences between a warm state, which I will not. Mention by name. Because it starts with an F and I don't use F words.
He's jealous.
He's wrong.
So Vinnie, to his credit, gave us a a written statement of resignation today. Uh gave us plenty of lead time, he'll be here till August, the beginning of August. So uh we um we have that need. Why is my brain telling me there's one more?
Uh Mr. Lockwood.
Yeah, Mr. Lockwood.
Uh Mr. Lockwood, because my brain was right.
A lot of cheap ways.
And uh. Mr. Lockwood's replacement is on board.
On what?
So.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so I wanna commend the principal for forwarding. We also have one teacher and the health and phys ed teacher. That uh offers have been extended. I met with one of them today, that the response to our offer may come back as early as tomorrow. And I'm meeting with another teach- uh teacher candidate. Uh tomorrow, who may accept it on the spot or wants some time to think about it, so we're moving forward.
Great.
Um and um interviews deliberations are continuing on the other two teaching positions.
Great. Thank you.
Sure thing.
So wait, the one that you offered to um Kevin accepted?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Oh, secret, oh, what?
And and.
Secret communication.
I didn't know.
I was gonna ask.
Uh we don't know, um.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and and Tony, by, to be clear, Tony is the one offering.
Okay, sorry.
Um, that's okay.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah. Uh.
That that individual that the um got very positive feedback when Kevin said uh that we were offering the position to that individual.
Yes.
Several members of the interview team went.
Yeah.
Very enthusiastic.
Yeah.
Uh that individual was enthusiastic about the offer, wanted, I always give. I said, are you comfortable signing this or do you wanna think about it? Some people wanna talk, you know, their to their couns- whoever they get counsel from, their significant other, sometimes it's their parent. Um always give them opportunity, never try to pin them in. So I gave this first in and out, no.
Yeah, exactly.
This person thought you had to say.
Okay.
And I thi- I think it's great to get out, if I can just say a couple things, it's great to get out early.
Right.
Uh it's a seasonal, you know, type of job, though that's hopefully not seasonal, but. Uh it's one where the is evidence flows in the hiring cycle, so I just wanna thank the committee to get out early with us. While there's not a lot of um applicants, the applicants that they have out there, I think are strong. I noticed that, so. And thank you, Ms. Anderson, for serving on the.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's also nice to serve with Ms. Edmonds and with Jen Marsh.
Yeah, what a crew.
Yeah, it's good.
Um. The only other thing I think is important for you to know is Kevin and I met with uh our second shift custodian. And asked him if he were interested in day job, I think that's respectful.
Yes.
James has been with the district longer than I, a very long time, and uh. Uh he's thinking about it. Um my gut is that he will choose to continue working the second shift. That seems to be uh his thing. And he's great at it. Um. One of the things that Vinnie suggested that we give consideration to is instead of one-day custodian. Hire two people to come in for approximately three and a half to four hours each, every day. Uh and then we would have a built-in substitute for vacations, sick days, or personal things. Um. I'm allowing Kevin to be the primary decision maker on that. I am trying to not, I'm trying to feel the boundaries that I have very strongly because I won't be here after June thirtieth. And I really don't wanna make real strong decisions one way or the other. Because they're gonna impact other people, not me. Um. I'm not, I, Kevin and I just, um, you know, we haven't really talked about that option. A lot of it makes sense and some of it doesn't.
Right.
Put it that way. So we will. We'll figure that out.
So new business?
New business, Madam Chair. Um I would like to start new business by saying for the first time since we've been doing policies. And I had no idea I was a policy guru until.
Well, you are.
There's two areas in new business. One is our typical policy review process. And that is eight A through eight I. Then there's a statement. The eight J through eight Y are not policy reviews. These are policies that because of the review process. And policies we've either amended. But mostly we've added. Previously, these policies are considered either unnecessary, redundant. Or replaced by other policies. So your first and second reading of those policies is to remove them. Not to edit them at all, so that should go really fast. Okay?
So in the minutes, it's listed here as first reading, but is it? Isn't it technically a second reading because we've reviewed the ones before? Or just should I write the policy, the name for removal? What do I write?
Are you talking about the the second group of these?
The motion. Day through Y.
Day through Y.
Day through Y.
You've never seen these before.
Oh, these aren't the ones that we decided throughout that they needed to be.
No, if you remember, we talked about it very early and what we said was, instead of doing this piecemeal, which would have driven me.
Right, but there were some that we removed throughout and those aren't included.
They're not in here, I've already moved, this this list used to have about twenty-four.
Uh-huh.
And now these are the, yeah, that, actually, that's a really good question. I frankly forgot I did it, but it was someone.
Okay.
Okay, so all of these are the first reading. Okay, the first group is first reading for revision and approval. The second group is first reading for removal only. Okay?
So there will be motion on all day through Y, motion to remove. Day by.
Okay? Ready?
Who wants to do the?
Oh, no, obviously it's our first reading.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I was getting.
Not yet, they're all set. Okay. We're ready.
Okay. So um policy eight A, which is IHB, Special Educational Programs and Accommodations. Programs for children with special needs. Um we have a current policy and there is a new policy that has been updated consistent. Um and it, the MASC reviewed this in two thousand twenty-three, it's one of the most recent ones. Um just as an aside, it also has the longest title of all the policies since we've reviewed. Okay? Uh policy IJLA, Library Resources, this is a new policy. And it uh once again is reviewed in two thousand twenty-three. Um I recommend that we add this to our policy manual. This has become part of, as you can well imagine, this policy has become. Hot.
Oh, yeah.
In particularly in other areas of the country, not so much Massachusetts. And this protects the school committee from uh random. Postures of appropriateness versus inappropriateness about library materials. Uh IJND is a new policy also, Access to Digital Resources, once again. Very important in our digital world. Um. And the FCC regulations, that this is based on, in addition to legal references of mass general law. Uh only went into effect in August of two thou- or went into effect in August of two thousand one. Uh but this has been re- 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 reviewed. By uh MASC attorneys and as you see, the original adoption is two thousand fifteen, so it needed review. Next policy is IJNDB, Exceptional Use Policy.
So the new name is Empowered Digital Use Policy.
That's correct, the the attorneys have recommended to change the title to Empowered Digital Use Pow- uh Policy. And once again, this policy is basically nine years old, so review was very important. Next one is IJNDC. The Internet Publication, we had no inter- uh Internet Publication Policy. Once again, based on the um. Um. The current state of technology, it is highly recommended that we have this. I find this interesting because this policy was. Put forward in two thousand fifteen and we still don't have it in our book and I don't know why. I plead guilty. Next one is policy IJNDD, a policy on social media. And obviously we need that like we need air, uh based on the current situation with social media. Next one is IJOD, Community Resources and Resource Persons and Speakers. And um. The um. The policy itself, I don't believe has been changed. But it it has a cross-reference that I think is important and a requirement for background checks when necessary. Just as a reminder, background checks are only required. If an individual has the potential to be alone with students. So if we have a speaker come into the building who's gonna speak to the sixth grade. We meet him at the door, we walk him in, the teacher's in the room, we walk him out, goodbye, no background check necessary.
Including, so would that apply to field day?
No, I don't think so. Because.
Because unfortunately, they've had school day volunteers get um. Or.
Court, yeah.
Court.
Yeah, you have to do it.
Yeah.
They have to because I, you know, they are incapable.
And you're.
But that's why I'm asking, is that the same thing you mean as.
No, it's not because the the reason for volunteers on field day is often to individually walk the children to the bathrooms.
Oh, okay.
Cause we don't want staff to do that, cause they're running stuff. Whereas this person, the speaker I just described, would have no reason to walk anybody anywhere.
Oh, like a substitute teacher would have to get it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
What about a custodian?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anyone? Police officers.
Yeah.
Anyone? Okay, next policy is. IKE, who no one in this room other than me is old enough to remember, that used to be our president, but uh. Uh this is promotion and retention of students. And we uh we already have this policy, we're just gonna add the source reference. That's an easy one. Next, the last one i- is policy IJOC, School Volunteers. Once again, uh the this policy was updated in my time, but we're just gonna add the little details. From the new ones. Okay. The next group of, I tried to make it easy on the member of the um. School committee who's gonna read these.
Yeah.
I put them all on one sheet of paper.
Okay, to make the motion to remove them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
So I'll read them this time and then next time.
I'm ready.
Um. How, I'm sorry, have you been reading the first reading to?
Yeah. No.
Just.
Well, I, so I guess, sorry, is my, my question is, am I supposed to make a motion first to remove these policies and then we move forward or?
So.
This is the first reading for removal of these policies.
Then I, I've only been doing the second reading.
So we don't need to vote, we're not voting tonight, it's a first reading.
You've got to vote.
Okay.
What you need to do is.
That's a first reading.
And next, next time I'll have the sheet with the names of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we, or we can do it right from the the agenda.
Sure, yeah.
So I'll just quickly say the policies, the following policies are for the first reading, uh not your action. Because these policies are uh recommended by MASC to be removed because they redundant, have been. Consolidated or replaced by a policy consistent with current law requirements and guidelines. And that includes, I'm gonna read them quickly. It's up to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I don't think. I would say, no, don't need to read them as long as we reference.
Plus they're, plus they're in the agenda, if anybody had any questions, right, okay? My work fee is done.
I love it. Okay, so in regards to any other committee business, I guess whether we. Dates regarding school committee or potentials.
I have this potentials person who's interested. And I reached out to that person today. And mentioned, I'm happy to answer questions, mentioned that we were gonna be meeting tonight, if that person could go in, I don't know if he could, but I will follow up.
Um. I've I've also heard of like a couple of people, two people have approached me about more information creep. Another person I heard secondhand was interested and so I approached that person and said I'm happy to provide other information. Um so, but I don't know if they've taken any steps to. To to be a write-in or if they plan to, I mean, there's a couple of ways that they can go that, if they can get a write-in or after the town vote, they could go through the um. Um process, um through the um. Selectmen can vote them in, so I, and I don't know if they've decided to run for it. I would say I've heard three people that are interested.
I've heard of one that may um ask folks about writing their name in um on the ballot. I had a question about that, is like if two people write your name in. Or you want to go.
I would be a certain amount, there's like a whole.
Okay.
Number.
All right.
When, when? At the town vote.
When?
Which is the twenty twenty-nine?
The last, yeah. Uh we go to town vote.
The twenty-seven, the twenty-seven.
Okay, okay.
That's Saturday.
Okay, and you and Michelle are done, the twenty-third is your last meeting, okay? Yeah.
No, so I encourage people to. Look at the.
Yeah.
I think that that last message made a big difference. Yeah, I think it reached people that hadn't ever reached yet, so I'm glad, thank you for that.
No, no, we don't, do we need to put out another message, I just don't wanna be a a master.
I don't think it's a function, I think it's either of the two things. Yeah, maybe one more before now.
Yeah. And then, I agree totally.
Maybe one more right before school vacation would be well timed, it's like next week sometime. Because it'll be about two weeks away from that's town vote. This should be waiting to. I don't think I can have it, but I'm just, I'm just wondering how many people. And all for dead. Is anyone having an aspect? No?
So then, could I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, session and enter into. Um. I'll make a motion to adjourn this session and enter into executive session, not to reconvene to open session. For the reading and approval of the executive session minutes on three twenty-six twenty-four and a strategy session with. a strategy session with prospective negotiation of a contract with non-union personnel the twenty, twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five superintendent's.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Adjourn this meeting at nine fifteen PM, thank you, everybody.
Um, Patty, so can you just remind me when the readings are today? So we have the twenty, next week we don't have a meeting, we have tonight, so the twenty-third, and then is it?